Hey, there we are.
Mayor and council members, my name is Benjamin Pyle. Currently I bartend at a bar and I run the Go to Best Food Truck. I'm a twenty six year old veteran and my wife is in the air force currently. I have an associate's degree in Persian Farsi through the Defense Language Institute and I have a bachelor's degree in English from ASU. Although I've only lived in Minot for a few years now, I have fallen in love with this town and the people in it. I'm an avid member of the community and spend most of my time either working at or attending local events. I also host the city council bingo, which has spread awareness of local politics and gotten members of the community more involved and informed at the events happening during these meetings. As someone who exists outside of local politics currently, but follows these meetings very closely, I ensure you that I will be more than ready to hit the ground running if appointed to this position. And when my term is up, I will not run for reelection due to a possible air force move late next year. Thank you for allowing me and all of the candidates this opportunity. Any questions?
Hey, I thought it'd be no better way to do this than have you introduce yourself.
Yeah, exactly.
And so that's what we did. And Tyler's here too. He was running late.
I'm here too.
So welcome to the podcast for the first time ever.
Yeah, thanks. I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, for sure.
Ben, this is a, we promise it's not this chaotic on a typical basis. I had to go try to find headphones and I lost them. It didn't work.
It's alright, we'll get that figured out.
We have a city council candidate or applicant Ben Pyle here with us today.
Excited to be here. Super excited.
Why'd you apply?
Um, well, uh, at the end of the day, uh, I watch city council meetings every week. I mean, every, every time they're on, I'm always watching them. I went, uh, I even went on a beach trip and I was gone for a week and I got all my cousins to watch it with me. I was like, this is entertaining and they loved it. They absolutely loved it.
How would you not love it?
Well, it is. But yeah, and so I just saw that there was an opportunity to apply and I said, well, you know, why not? You know, I'm only going to be here for about a year or more, so this is the perfect amount of time for me to try and throw my hat in the ring. You know, I'm a younger person by at least fifteen years than anyone else in the council. Just some different representation, so.
It's like thirty eight, I think.
Thirty eight? Okay, well, maybe twelve years.
Still, I mean, yeah, it's crazy. Could be a little off on that age, Paul, if you're watching, I apologize.
So did you, um, did the process go as you thought it would? How was the process?
Yeah, um, I've talked to some people and you know, I was like, and let me just say my case to be quick and easy, you know, just be like, get in, get out. You know, I'm going after Padraig O'Leary. Padraig O'Leary took, I assumed, you know, the whole four minutes. So I was like, oh, you know, I'll, I'll go right after that, be quick and simple. And that's what I did, you know, I didn't think I had maybe a ten percent chance. And if they had gone to two, three failed votes, then I might be in the running, but you know, I just sat back, relaxed, said what I was going to say and then let it all unfold.
Yeah, it was, it was, it would have been, it, it, the vote process went way faster than I thought it was. Only two rounds.
We, 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 I mean, we hammered on it pretty heavily. We didn't think they were going to come to an agreement on anyone. So the fact that they got it on that second round, that was far and away better than what I anticipated.
While we were wrong, we were still a little bit right because we said that Beth Feldner would be a top candidate.
Was the first nominee.
It was agreed on that she has definitely the qualifications for it. It'll be interesting to see if she runs.
Next year.
I, I hope she does. I, I really do.
So there's fifteen people that were there, um, obviously a sixteenth one that timing didn't work out for. Which ones of those, in your opinion, Benjamin, because you, you're going to be the expert today? Of those fifteen?
And since you can't run next year too.
I can't run. If I could, I would. A hundred percent.
You would? Okay. Of those fifteen, who's gonna run?
Beth Feldner is gonna run. Um, I think, uh, that this is a wild take with that Kevin Keyes guy, the Philippines guy. He's gonna run. I got, I got a feeling.
He was the osmosis.
Yeah, osmosis guy. Yeah. Roger Raish is gonna run. I think so.
I can see that.
You know, love for Hayden Schuler. That'd be great if she ran. I think Melissa Wright might run.
Yep.
She's pretty adamant on it. Um, I think Josiah Royce will run.
No, you, yeah, but he'll run for mayor again.
He'll run for mayor, yeah.
Yeah. You think, uh, and for the other four, they're probably running for council again?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think everyone else is gonna try and go for their seat again.
I think that's gonna be really interesting about next time. Tyler's, I think that there's gonna be a ton of people that are gonna be on the ballot for city council this time.
There's a good chance it's gonna be a, a heavy ballot, so name recognition could make a difference on that. And grabbing the narrative late, getting jump, jumping too early could be either beneficial or harmful in that situation. I mean, it's, it can go both ways. Getting out there early could be able to allow you to get that more name recognition and build up a base. Or you could get lost in translation and lost in the crowd if everyone tries to jump in soon.
Yeah, for sure. It's gonna be interesting. Uh, where, where do you think is the most optimal place for someone to jump into the race?
I think, uh, I think the beginning of next year. I think after the holidays, sometime in January, when everyone's locked inside in the winter and you just start posting stuff on the socials, just start saying what you want to say because you're six months out, you know? As soon as it gets warm, then you start campaigning as much as possible.
One of the disappointing things, I said it, um, is that I felt like some of these candidates, applicants are not necessarily candidates, but applicants should have started a social campaign of why, why choose me for, so that we, so people could have known better. Renner Schuler says Hayden won't be able to run. She'll be going to vet school in the next four years.
Well, congratulations on vet school, Hayden. That's awesome, but.
When you return.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. That'll be perfect. That'll be like twenty thirty. That's, that's election year.
So very interesting. We did get a person elected though, and so we will allow him to introduce himself as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor Janster and members of city council. My name's Mike Hayes. I moved from Fruitland, Idaho after completing tenth grade to Washington State with my family, where I was, resided for thirty years. Was an apprentice with my father for a brick, brick mason. Shortly after that, in my early twenties, uh, I started my own company. Then graduated on to, uh, construction, building homes, uh, have worked, uh, had five kids, uh, married and five kids. After about thirty years in Washington State, I moved to, uh, which I did home building, a little land development out there. Moved to, uh, North Dakota where I met my wife, uh, which, uh, was in two thousand, right after the flood, so two thousand twenty one, thousand eleven. And, uh, have, uh, started up, her and I started Four Seasons Construction, which we did the same thing here in, uh, Minot as I had previously done. Do a little bit of land development, some, uh, home construction. We have between us, uh, her son, my five, and we have twelve grandkids. We were fortunate enough to be able to retire this year, uh, here in Minot. And so I've got a lot of idle time on my hands. I think I could be a real asset to the city of Minot with my knowledge of, uh, the workings of engineering, public works, construction in general, uh, some of the shortfalls of, uh, I think of what the, what the city is needing. So thank you for your time and, uh, good luck.
All right, so thoughts on him?
Mr. Mike Hayes, uh, came, came over after the flood. I think that's one of the big things with him. He was a home builder coming to Minot to help rebuild the city post flood.
I, I think that's really brings a very interesting perspective because the flood means so much to Minot. One, it's impacted a lot of people. Two, it's a huge topic of discussion when it comes to budgetary stuff.
Still to this day.
Still to this day, it's a huge topic. And so having someone that will have a very different perspective on the flood will be interesting.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's interesting. Um, you know, I, I understand the whole, you know, having the construction background and the engineering background and everything, um, as far as that goes. But, you know, we do have city engineers and we do have consultants for that perspective. You know, I, I, it's great that, you know, he has a wealth of experience, but also I found it weird that he couldn't remember what, uh, when he came here and it was the flood. I was like, even I know that. Like, I was like, I know when yours was, no.
That's, that was a transformative time in Minot's history.
Yeah, it was very transformative. You know, I only got here a few years ago and, you know, the importance of that is, yeah, it's right. I hear stories all the time, you know?
I, I, for better or for worse, I wonder if downtown Minot would be what it is today if the flood didn't happen. Like, there's, there's a lot of what happened down there that I'm not sure if it would have still happened the way it did and transformed the way it has over the last decade had the flood not happened. Maybe it would have, maybe it would have happened sooner.
So what do you think a lot of the development in Minot would have happened?
And let's see, just in general, I, I wonder if because of the flood happening when it did and right in the middle of the oil boom, it, it spurred even more development than it would have without the flood.
In general, Minot would have been less developed.
I feel like there's a chance of that.
I think, and this is an obvious one, but I think this is very true. I think this flood spurred a ton of development on North Hill.
Yeah, for a fact.
It, it did. Well, and I think, I think that would be the greatest impact of the development that it had. And then the secondary impact might be the, uh, downtown.
Yeah, no, and that's a great point because it showed during the flood when Minot was split in half. Yeah, there was no grocery store on North Hill. You had to have marketplace food, like shipping bottles, like pallets of water bottles up to North Hill to be able to sell, give away whatever the situation was at that time and.
We only had one point of being able to get to the other side of town, which was a mess. And then that bridge started to go.
And it was only a two lane road at that point too, for the bypass. It was a mess.
You missed out on some good times, man. You missed out on some good times.
Going to Georgia at that point.
Is that where you're from originally? Is Georgia?
Georgia, so, yeah.
How do you like the winters?
Uh, you know, uh, it brings people together, you know, it's cold, but, uh, I tell my family it's negative eighty windshield, so.
That's a big gap from what you had down there, I'm sure.
It's good bragging.
Exactly.
You know, negative Eddie windshield and ninety five degrees with a hundred percent humidity. So, you know, I got both sides.
Best of both worlds up here.
So we have a full council. That's exciting.
Do. It's awesome.
Into budget season.
Things are gonna get done.
But there was some question that was brought up. First off during the four o'clock meeting, uh, as the mayor showed the petition that had been dropped off with not confirmed adequate enough, uh, signatures to force a special election, except we have a different setup for government and so it cannot actually force a special election that would have to be by the choice of the council.
Yeah, it is just an influencing perspective at this point.
The person that was behind those signatures showed up at the five thirty meeting at the public appearances and there was, he got twelve minutes of time on his topic. It was all him speaking. Uh, there was some back and forth conversation happened between him and council. And so we have one of those clips for you right here.
Josiah, um, what we're talking about here is the difference in century code between two different forms of government. You're citing a form of government that we are not. I agree with you that that is in century code in the section you're looking at. We are not that type of government. We are a different type of government. That's what the city attorney is referring to. Please review that form of government and the language there because I had this same concern and this same question when we were working through the canvassing for the election. So I would ask you to go and check that section of century code because they are two separate things. We are a modern council, is that correct? That is different than a city council model. Those are two separate things.
The AI source I used across multiple different AI sources specifically, uh, specifically looked at it as a modern council thing. And I, I reviewed the century code the old fashioned way by paper, but then I had other friends, other help that were looking into it using AI from Minot specifically set up as a modern council. So, I mean, this is a very serious matter and I'm not saying that you're wrong, sir.
I, I agree, I agree completely. It's a very serious matter. And I will tell you that if I'm being advised wrong, then we will deal with that.
Very good.
My understanding of century code through my reading, as well as the work that I've done with the city attorney, leads me to believe that again, there's still a question that's open as to whether it's advisable for us to hold a special election. That's a different question. And actually, we had this discussion during our four PM meeting before you arrived about whether it mattered that the petitions were turned in by any point in time because under the law, they're not required. So there is no four PM timeframe. There's nothing related to that in the modern form of government that we are. So we can still take it under advisement that there is a petition that's been submitted, but that's all it is. It's advisement.
All right, gotta love, yeah, I agree. Gotta, gotta love the AI source. Uh, break that. That, that was not, was that on the bingo card?
No, I did not have that on the bingo AI sources, you know? It was not just AI, it was he had multiple people using AI engines to find out something that was, uh, not factual. A funny thing about the ballot turning in, I was, as I was heading into the meeting, uh, special media four, I opened the door for someone who I now realize, uh, was, uh, I think it's Josiah's mother and she had a stack of paper and, which I now realize is the ballots. I was like, I was like, what did she have in her hands?
You held the door for the ballots.
Yeah, you were part, you were part of that. You know, um, this is a very interesting thing that Blessum says and there is, I don't know if this is basically prudent for us to actually do this, but it feels like we have legal standing to do that. And it sounds like that legal standing is in question by Josiah, uh, where there may be some.
The city, the city attorney are very confident where they stand.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Yep. And that's kind of what we tried to nail home on yesterday is that there's some murkiness in the water, but the city is very, on their side, they're very clear where they stand on this.
Yeah.
So it'll be interesting if there's a small chance that this gets brought to a, a suit, um, just based off what he was saying there, you know?
Well, and on the flip side too.
Wait, before you go, before, right before this, there's an interaction between him and the city attorney where he's like, just references an attorney. He's like, wait, are you talking about the attorney that I have or if I get an attorney?
Are you saying I should get an attorney? And she's just like.
That's up to you, man.
You make that call. Yeah.
But yeah, so right there is like, huh, interesting. That's definitely in his mind of, of should he go down that route?
Well, he's already in pending litigation with the city and the county right now with the police departments and dealing with that. So I, I find one interesting caveat to the whole thing. If something were to progress in that, of that nature for this situation, it would have to happen very quickly.
Well, and it does.
It's not, no, that's not how those things work. So if anything happened, it would have to be, I, I mean, it would have to be back. You can't backdate something like that.
Right.
Elections are already next June for the position, so it's.
So I, I think that the voice of the people needed to be heard. I, it's almost becoming a buzzword now. What happens is there's these thoughts that come up. It feels like what we've seen and happen on councils, these, these ideas that come up that are really solid ideas, one of them being the voice of the people. You know, having, being fiscally conservative is a great idea. When you don't like the idea that someone wants to spend money on, we need to be fiscally conservative. Why are we spending money there? But we definitely need to spend money over here. So, um, it, it's all about individual priorities is what it comes down to, but they, they turn into buzzwords. And so it feels like voice of the people is kind of turning into a buzzword. We've heard it over and over on this. We've heard it, uh, on the sales tax. We've heard it on the liquor license. We heard it on the daycare. Which voice of the people are we listening to? We go and have it contrasted and this is one that annoys me is contrasted where we want to get rid of this surveys where we have like less people in a survey than almost show up at a city council meeting, like when you go and you look at the amount, you know?
And this is coming from people that like to take surveys ourselves here, so.
Right. There's not very many people participating in these, these city satisfaction surveys. But then we have increased our construction output because of that citizen and that, that's on the citizens. But also like we go and we make decisions off such a small parameter here.
And how often do people go out and take those surveys because they're motivated to do so by something that's either on it or that will be affected by it?
Because right now I hate construction.
Tell me about it. I, I live behind the silo, the big silo by Flower Central. Oh my gosh, the construction is.
Central Avenue was just shut down.
Central Avenue is shut down. So I live on Fourth Street. So it's, it is like, M, like they're digging a hole in my street that replacing the storm drain and sewers in the pipe, so.
Of like, if there's like three ways to get out of where you live, two of them are closed off.
So then you don't want construction because it negatively affects where you're at, but I'm over in just, uh, you know, east of the, or west of the eighty three bypass where, you know, you have the bypass technically in town, but you have the bypass and you have smooth, and yeah. Every once in a while I hit a pothole. Well, I want construction. And so you, like, we've got, and I'm not saying that council makes decisions solely predicated off of a customer, customer, a citizen satisfaction survey, but we hear those brought up a lot.
No, you're, you're right. Those are something that gets referenced all the time and you have in a city, the size of Minot, which in the grand scheme, as you obviously know, isn't huge, but it's still big enough to have a big variance of people from one side or the other, especially when it comes to dealing with construction.
Yeah, right. Yeah. And, uh, Alderman Olson is saying that they're done with random participants, random participants statistically accurate, much different than a social media poll. Not comparing it to a social media poll at all. Um, just saying it'd be difficult to base entire budget decisions based off of a survey.
No, it, it can be hard to gather the sheer volume of voices you need from everywhere. Like, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't. It's, it's just a, one of those things that it's hard to guarantee how many.
Hey, all right, this is interesting feedback that we got.
Yeah.
For sure.
And I think there definitely is an issue of how do we get to hear the people? There, I mean, yeah, there's like a ser, ser, survey polls. I've never gotten one, you know, it's one of those things where it's like, okay, do we mail them out? Uh, again, there's people that don't have addresses here. There are military members that live here, but they're not citizens here. How do we reach them? There's, I think there's a big question of how do we hear the voice of the people? There's, and people just don't know about the city council meetings. They don't know. It's not advertised. Hey, we're throwing the newspaper. I don't know anyone my age that reads the newspaper.
Right. Well, they don't know, but also I, I would go down the path of agreeing with a lot of that's been said that they just don't care until it's an issue that they care about.
That's, yeah.
And the problem with that is like, there's a budget here and that's coming up and people need to show up. And if you have a problem with construction, too much construction, then show up and say something. Be like, we're spending this much money, but we can't get around town. We have, I mean, you, the third street bridge, I know that's not part of the construction, but that's, that's a problem. You have the sixteenth street. You can't go up that. The, you have to go take backroads, which we've talked about before. We don't need to go down that path again, but it's like just difficult. You got, this isn't the city's fault, but you got, um, the Broadway Bridge there, um, over the highway eighty three. That's, or two fifty two.
Side, yeah.
Over two fifty two is a mess as well. Like you have so many major arteries. It's takes forever to get from one side of town to the other.
Cause we gotta have these.
And then don't get me started on zipper merging because people go and people, the advocates.
Don't work in Minot.
Yeah, but the advocates for zipper merging are like, it works. It's great. I'm like, yeah, it does. But this is, this is how people that I see do it is it's not that they're like two hundred feet back trying to find a way in. It's that they get all the way to the front and they're like, now you gotta let me in because this is zipper merging. That's not how it's supposed to work. There's supposed to be a consistent flow of traffic on both lanes where they can go and, and go in smoothly and not break the flow of traffic.
This is my lane. There are many like it, but this one is mine.
Someone who lived in Atlanta for a couple of years and did Uber and drove a lot in Atlanta, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of, people do not know how to merge at all. The merging doesn't, like in Atlanta, we're doing zipper merging at eighty miles per hour.
Exactly.
The drivers in Atlanta are crazy, but they're good. But, you know, it's just, uh, it's, it's something that should be taught in schools or whatever. Okay, be nice and courteous and give space, you know? We're all gonna get there at the same time.
It's, it's the one that's, has been pointed out. It's the one thing that North Dakota nice does not.
Yeah, this is my lane. You can't, right? Cause, cause in, it, it's not zipper merging in people's minds. It's getting cut off.
Yeah, which is not.
It's, it's not the case, but that's the perception of it a lot of the times. And again, you can always go back to the whole like, because a lot of these things are things that need to be fixed and have to get done.
They do. They do. And if we don't, then we get way behind and maybe that's part of where we're at.
Yeah. And we're like, again, we've harped on this, but this is, we're at such a point where it's, things have to get done, but we're almost trying to get too much done at once.
Borderline feels that way. And I know that there's data that probably that more could be looked at.
Arguments against it, I'm sure.
But does borderline feel that way for sure?
Yeah, I, I, I agree on that one for sure.
We're gonna take a quick break and then we'll be back. We got stuff from the council.
More council meetings to go over.
We got a lot of clips lined up. It's gonna be a good time. We'll be back in a minute fifteen.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Me Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouthwatering Mexican entrees. Me Mexico, South Broadway.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.
All right. Hey, we're back.
You got any big football games coming up?
We, we, we got one on Monday, next Monday we play. Did we do the Me Mexico ad? Gosh, I missed it. It's seriously how much I'm paying attention. I know.
We're over here killing it in the producer scene.
I know you are. You're, you're slaying it over there, producing away. I'm like, what happened? Who's here?
All right. So we had a lot of fun things happen at city council meeting. We had alcohol ordinance talked about. We missed clips from the four o'clock meeting that we might go back and play. Um, and we had a topic on, um, sales tax, which this is a big one that's coming up.
Yep.
And a lot of good conversation on that. That's where council got the most contentious.
Yeah, it was at the end of it.
At the end of it. Uh, but there was some, uh, obvious, uh, sorry, Alderman Pittner had a presentation that he did on it and at one point he mentioned some of the priorities, like we had to identify priorities. And so we have a clip on that, that we're gonna cut to real fast.
And when it comes to priorities, these are infrastructure projects that need to happen. And if they're not paid through sales taxes or paid through by the, by the mill levy, your taxes go up. And if you, and if you pay for it out of the sales tax still, that's less money that we're, we were, we were presented with giving this to, to public safety, that doesn't do anything for them. It doesn't, it doesn't fix the, the, the roof, whether, well, I guess warranty work will, but again, we, we were faced with a fourteen million dollar bill of a renovation. Where does that money come from? Maybe it comes from reserves. Maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's, there's a, there's a mix of, of these revenue streams, but it I'm not gonna say because other communities do it, we have to do it too, but other communities are seeing, those are, those are the pressures that, that, that they're being faced with. And I think looking at all of the options and having all of the information so that the twelve hundred, twelve hundred soccer families can come and say, I'm not gonna get sidewalks. I'm not gonna get a safer, safer, uh, intersection at twenty first avenue. Safe routes to school, loose and Clark. My kids are gonna have to walk to school in the streets. My one point five million dollars is being cut from the street budget for those projects that, that we want to do. The library roof that's already having issues is, is now going to be defunct. I mean, again, these are just discussions I think we have to happen, have to have. These are facts and numbers that we all have to consider when making these decisions of whether we're reallocating, implementing new or doing nothing at all. If we're gonna go down one road, I think we should look at all of them. And that's all I'm.
It's always asking. Um, sorry, I didn't mean to cut him off. Um, so basically the conversation around here is one that's been going on for a couple of meetings. And that is around reallocating or creating a new half percent sales tax. There's one, uh, that currently and we'll have a clip later where it kind of revolves around a fifteen percent, uh, portion that's going to economic development and they, some do not want that to go away and some are fine with that going away. Now that there's seven people in council, there'll be a full four, three vote. There will not be a three, three vote.
I know, not on this one. It's gonna go one way or the other.
And I think Alderman Pittner, I really like this portion because he goes and he outlines his priorities of, this is some of the stuff that this is going through to.
Effect.
Effect. Yep. And there's other ways that it could be paid for.
Yeah, funding can come from other sources. You can swing it around. We have reserves, but also it, because of this, it, it makes it a little bit more of an indirect route to get there.
Yeah, it does, but that in Alderman Blessum said he wanted all those things to be funded as, or almost all those things to be funded. I think there was one thing that he wasn't sure about. But right now, one of the proposals is for the police station to be, which the, over the next three years, having five mil set aside to cover a fourteen million dollar renovation. Um, and that'd be out of reserve. So.
Yep.
So already there's a plan to use reserves for.
A big construction project coming up.
Right. So either way, you're skinning the cat, the, well, that might not be a very nice term, so that's not skinny cats around here. But, um, either way that you're, you're tackling this project, um, with reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's your guys' opinion on this half percent sales tax? Should we go and have it reallocated or should we, uh, go and get a new one added or should we just move on to a different topic?
Go for it, Ben.
I, I think that there was a big talk, uh, especially, uh, from Councilman Mike Hayes about, you know, he also. I, I think that there was a big talk, especially from Councilman Mike Hayes about, you know, he also was saying, hey, we need a revenue source for the city. We need, we need some kind of income. We need something. If, if that half percent sales tax is that extra benefit, you know, as long as, hey, I'm willing to pay half percent sales tax, as long as that stuff is going to affect the city and affect things that I see around me. Sure, it's not going to be immediate and that's what people need to realize, but I, I'm always for more, a, a little bit of a higher tax, as long as it affects me, you know, taxation with representation instead of just, you know, nothing. But you know, then again, you know, you know, do I necessarily think, do I necessarily want a fifteen million dollar renovation to the police department? When, you know, there could be other things benefited throughout the city, you know, it's, there's so many little things there is. And I think, you know, I wish, I know a lot of people, especially my age, don't know anything going on in the city council. And I've been trying to bring it up and trying to force people to watch it because they don't realize what's happening around them.
They don't realize the entertainment value.
The entertainment value also, you know, I try to make it fun, but I think that it is important to realize, oh, sure. Like I always tell people, hey, you know, if you think there are parts that are boring, it's always on YouTube afterwards. Just watch the whole thing and skip the, all right, here's the insurance we're gonna offer to our employees, you know, you can watch that, the debate between Blessing and Pittner on sales tax and all that stuff.
You can skip the twenty minute back and forth on concrete construction.
Yes. Don't even get me started on that.
Some things that just have to be taken care of that are not all that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Interesting.
But you know, I, I do think that is if, you know, with the cap on property tax and all that stuff, I think if this is our only way to get more money into the city, then I think we should do it.
You should look at, at, and that would be looking at an additional half percent. So pushing up sales tax to a total of eight percent.
Yeah.
Fair. What's your view, Kyler?
I'm never big on adding additional taxes. I don't love the idea of it. However, if we can guarantee that the property taxes will go down, the mills will continue to go down. I maybe could be convinced into doing it. I don't know if this is the best, maybe this would be the best route is to alter that emergency funding and move it into an half cent of its own. But then so much of this now is, do we move it into the half where the seven and a half we already have or into an additional eight? Because now this is where the discussion really comes to, what are we okay with possibly losing? Nothing's a guaranteed loss at that point. And I, they're going to find a way to fund the library's new roof and the things it needs still. And there's, there's a lot of things that are going to come one way or the other, but I just, I don't know if I can get behind an extra half cent tax right now, but also if we can, or especially if property taxes are eliminated, I, I would be, I wouldn't be against it at that point.
Goes back to the magic.
Exactly. That's just such, yeah, that's, that's the bigger overarching issue of the whole thing at that point. And.
Really, the state put, put us in a bind with this cap, giving this small credit, but not really fixing the problem. And so now you still have your property taxes. But then there needs to be another revenue source potentially. And so now it feels like just taxes are gonna just go up and you're not gonna really fully feel the benefit of it. That's what it's starting to feel like.
That's kind of what it feels like. We're starting to get into.
But I think there was an interesting point that Blessing made early on in this discussion that I have a clip for.
Jonathan's on, on these clips today, guys.
As I've said multiple times, I, I don't believe we have a revenue problem in this city. I don't believe we have a revenue problem, problem at any level of government that I've ever seen. It's not that we have too little money coming in.
Hey, shortest clip ever because Dave Legfield is coming up right behind him and switched back to him. But he does not feel, he was making a statement that city does not have a revenue problem. This simply comes down to better maximizing the dollars that they already are getting in.
Which I, I think that's where you start and you have to try to prioritize and start there. And then if we get to that stage and we still are struggling, which I think we're, I guess we're probably at that stage now where you have to figure out, are we still struggling to fund these things?
I don't know that we're quite there yet.
We're, we're, okay.
I think we're one more round.
You're probably right.
Which that would be probably a very conservative take, physically conservative take. Where do you feel like we're at? Cause you have a different view on this than I do.
Yeah, no, um, you know, if, if, you know, if we, if we, this half percent sales tax goes, does go through, then that saves us, it's a buffer in the future. If we need, if whatever happens, if we get another flood, if whatever happens in the future, God forbid, we can have that little bit of extra money that will benefit this town, you know, I won't be here for much longer. I plan on coming back after everything. So that is the dream. You know, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's tough. Doing it now could make it so you don't have to do it in the future. And when those, you know, if say property taxes do get eliminated at the next legislative session, I doubt it'll happen, but you know, pie in the sky kind of thing here. Say we raise that half cent sales tax now. And then in twenty twenty-seven, that legislative cycle, they heavily, heavily reduce property taxes or eliminate them, something along those lines. Now you're gonna notice that tax cut even more so at that point.
I mean, you're depending on, and you're.
But then you're going to have to worry about.
You're depending on the legislature to get something that benefits you overly. Like that's very difficult.
We found that out this year that, and with a lot of the recent history that they're, they're not huge fans on going through with a lot of what needs to get through. They like to get done what, what gets done.
Honestly, we're, we're digging at them. I only, the only place that I have digged at them hard is on this three percent cap because it is not, it, I don't view that as being a fair thing that they did there. But that being said, and you can say one more thing in a minute, but that we're gonna have Jose on, Jose Fasina, District forty.
Senator.
Senator, he's gonna be on this coming Tuesday, nine AM. And that's one of the things we're gonna talk about is budget and property tax gap.
Yep. And yeah, I, I look forward to talking with Jose on Tuesday.
Now he's switched gears. So now.
Didn't forget, I promise.
Yeah, I know you didn't forget, but you finally came to your senses. Kyler has been, you know, full, full of hot takes this morning.
Full, full throttle, ready to roll today.
All right. So there was a good exchange though, between Pittner and Blessing on this topic. And I, I think this is, it felt for
Two hours.
Fifteen sixteenths of the, of the, of the council meeting, like this was a, a different style. Was not, not like, it was like it used to be.
Yeah. Like I don't want to say they turned a page, but like it was.
But maybe the three hours, four hours had worked hard on them all and they did not have the energy.
For a lot of that bickering.
Yeah. But then suddenly we found some stress.
Again, I'll respond to that a little bit. Again, I agree with this is economic development. But when this conversation was presented to us on August fourth, the day before an election and weaponized on Facebook and social media.
The thing is, is true.
This was, this was saying, we don't care about public safety. Cause this half a cent could go towards public safety. You want to talk about facade improvement program? You got about two hundred thousand dollars in this year's recommended president's budget that would go towards public safety. This is about killing economic development. And I, I, I agree with you, Mike. I've said that from the, from the very get go. It wasn't on August fourth. It was about trying to do something for public safety. And you know darn well that that was weaponized and put out there under this, this, this shale game that was, we gotta do this to support public safety. They can't pay for PPE. They can't pay for their protective gear. And here we are. Looking at ways, cause that was what I, that's what was presented to me. Was we need to do more for public safety. A half cent sales tax? Is it the right way or the wrong way? I don't know. That's why I asked for an initial to be put on the ballot. Let the people decide. But we also want to get rid of public satisfaction surveys. So, so I, I don't know that if we're gonna do that and we're gonna go towards the direction of, of, of us having to make tough decisions when maybe we should impose it. We have the, the ability to impose this at the council level. Let's have that discussion as well. Let's, let's look at all of the options. So I agree, I agree that yes, it's about killing economy, but if you're worried about facade improvement program, we're worried about two hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't do anything for public safety. It doesn't. So, so again, I, I'm, I'm not prepared to make a motion tonight. I provided direction to staff to bring us the ballot when we, when we get the ballot language. I would like to see this as, as an alternative to implement this at the council level. And we'll, and we'll have that discussion then. But again, this doesn't do anything for public safety. If we, we, if it, we can, we can delete all these projects and put it towards public safety because that was the initial proposal. I was told and, and, and there were three council members names that were drug through the mud is they don't support public safety because of the action they took tonight. To the point of council members getting threatening emails. So I take all of this very seriously. And I want to look at all the options.
A good Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'm gonna cut out that clip. We might cut to the rest. There, there's basically a rebuttal at the end of that one. Where Alderman Blessings like, just to be clear, I'm not the one that you're actually talking to. Because they were in a back and forth conversation.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the stuff happened with other people on council. We hiked that up a little bit. It really wasn't that contentious, but it brought back to, it basically referenced back to the contentious moments. It's more or less what happened there. But it is an interesting deal and it gets to this deal that I think we've talked about a lot on council where it feels like some of them work off of priorities. And others, they all work off priorities, but sometimes we get into this deal where we're trying to manipulate the words or we're trying to manipulate the votes and the opinions on one deal and apply them to everything else. And I think that's just something that frustrates me. I wish it could be removed out of it. And it's just a human aspect because it's people, but I, I wish that could be removed out of it, out of it.
It's even more prevalent because some of these people happen maybe not to love each other. So it happens to come to the surface a little bit more there.
Zach makes a good point. It was talked about that, you know, this half percent sales tax could be implemented from the council.
Yeah.
And yeah, that'd be a huge mistake.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that was serious. I think it was just mentioned. I don't think there were, it would be insane if the council decided to do that. I don't think that there's an intention to actually make that happen.
Two things with that. One, I doubt it would pass with the new current council. And two, I.
Even with the old council.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I, on top of that, then I really, if it does happen and this does go forward, I would love to see it on the ballot. I'm always for something going to referendum. If that's the case, I have no.
If it needs to. Yeah. But this is the thing, because you say that and you say always.
Yeah, always is a big word.
The reason why it's a big word right now though, is because anything that is a percentage controversial, right now we're getting to the place where we want to make that something where the people decide it.
Yeah. And there's a certain level of, like you mentioned earlier, the representation that we do vote for to come in there and make, and represent us to make those decisions.
There's a huge balance there.
I mean, we had, you know, last, uh, this year, you know, we had the half percent sales tax vote on for the parks and nobody came out for it. Hardly anybody knew about it.
Twenty-five vote difference.
Yeah. And the thing too is if we're into this, if we're gonna have these big votes on, you know, half percent sales tax, they should be, they should happen during these bigger elections, like in June, we have the council vote and everything. They should be included on that ballot rather than its own little thing. Just because people just don't know about it. And they're gonna know about a council vote because they're gonna see billboards everywhere. They're gonna see the signs. If that's what we need to do for something like a half percent sales tax vote, uh, then, then needs to be advertised heavily.
I like, so I, I agree with you, but I, and I, I don't think it was, I, I agree with the idea that people didn't know about it, but I also, and I, I hammer people a little bit right now. I feel like there's people that didn't show up. I know some people that knew about it. I'm like, yeah, it wasn't basically convenient for me to get there. Where you could have went and done early voting.
Cause that was available for that election.
It was available for that election.
I can tell you for a fact, I know people in that same boat.
Yeah. And it's like, all right, so what are we supposed to do then? Because a half percent sales tax.
That's big.
Isn't, is big, but it doesn't sound big enough.
No.
Half percent, like what, what's big? When you talk about half percent was big. Nothing sounds big with half percent, but it, but it adds up fast, right? And now you're at eight percent. If you've said eight percent sales tax, then people are like, wait a minute, I don't want to pay that much money.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
When it's, you're talking about the same thing, but how it's worded makes a huge difference.
Half percent. There's nothing wrong that they did there. They're not being nefarious, but yeah, absolutely. How it's presented makes all the difference to the public. I, I just feel like it wasn't, they didn't feel like it was big enough. But when it came down to electing a new mayor, that was huge, man. And honestly, you could make a very strong case that the half percent sales tax would have way, not way more, but a slightly more effect on the city of Minot than.
The ten month mayor term.
Yeah, the ten month mayor term.
Yeah, that was gonna be the same person anyway. Mark Jansen should have just wrote it out, but you know, we have the will of people. So, but, uh, yeah, if that, you know, even if, you know, if we had thrown that half percent sales tax on with the mayor oral vote, you know, that would be great, you know, if we had foresight to do that, but of course, things change.
It came up late and it did come up, it came up late in the memories.
Unfortunately, yeah, we didn't see this whole mayor situation coming, coming to fruition the way it did either. So that's a whole different bag of tricks in and of itself in that one. But here we are. We're through it. All right. We're, we're getting into the sales tax discussions now and I, you got another clip for us?
No, I don't. Okay. The other clip that I have is one that I missed.
Okay, that's fine.
About our, when we were talking about who got elected to city council.
So, so I.
But yeah, um, that being said though, I think, is there more that you have on sales tax?
I was just gonna say, I look forward to seeing where some of this public discussion goes on the fifteenth with this. That's gonna be big.
I believe that's a big day for hearings, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the budgetary.
Bingo day.
Yeah, I bet it is.
It's gonna be fun. I want to have some exclusive little squares for that one.
And speaking of that, you are the host. Well, do you host the?
So it's when I'm bartending, but I host it. I make it up and everything like that. So yeah, I write them every week.
So before you talk about that a little more, it's a big week for budget hearings.
Yes.
The fifteenth is the city councils and then the Tuesday, the sixteenth.
Is it the county commissions?
County commissions at six PM. It's at a time when everybody can make it. I might have it in the evening on Tuesday.
Might have to make it to that one. That'd be, that'd be a good one to go to on a Tuesday.
So remember that your property taxes are made up of four entities. Everybody listening to this knows this. We talked about it and you guys are in to know, but it's made up of four taxing authorities. One of them is city council, the city. One of them is Ward County. One of them is the Minot Park District. And one of them that you need to pay attention to is a Minot Public Schools. And we had some people telling us we need to look into that a little bit more. We might be trying to get somebody from there on to talk about their budget because they are one of the biggest budgets, if not the biggest.
Yeah.
I think they're the highest mill.
Yeah, the, the highest like percentage wise of the mill going is allocated to them, I believe. I'd have to double check that. But yeah. I'm pretty sure that's how it's set up at this point.
Probably get that correction here soon.
Yeah.
But as you were saying.
Yes, let's talk about your city council bingo a little bit.
We've been doing it for, I'd say a year and a half, almost two years now. But it, it came to fruition where we were watching, um, Mr. Lackadex's hearing about permits being misused. Uh, and we all decided together and watched it and it was a big circus show and we all were shouting and screaming at the bar and my buddy John, we need to do something about this. And I was like, let's do bingo. And then, uh, the bingo came to fruition and it's a fantastic thing. And people have been loving it ever since. People come in, they're like, why is, what, what is going on? What's on the TV? Like city council meeting. They're like, I've never seen one of these. And I was like, well, you should, you should always watch this. Now you're in. And then people will, you know, kind of wait a little bit and they won't pay attention. And then as soon as the personal appearances come on, then they're like, all right, what is this?
What? What's going on here?
But no, it's, it's been great. People love it. A lot of people come in. But especially, yeah, the next, uh, public hearing, the budget hearing is gonna be crazy.
So Blue Rider at five thirty.
Blue Rider at five thirty. Yep. Uh, first and third Monday of every month, unless it's a holiday. So.
Then it's on Tuesday.
It's on Tuesday. So we'll still do it, but.
Exactly.
But no, it's, it's been, it's been great. Uh, I've gotten way more, uh, involved in the community and everything because of it. And you know, I'll just talk, I'll talk to everybody about it. But hey, city council meeting, watch it. You know, I know all the city council members. I'm very involved in the going ons and there's definitely some people that have been on the council before that go to the blue and they're regulars there and we talk and you know, all this stuff. And I definitely talked to some people that used to be on the council prior to, you know, my, uh, little presentation the other day and just discussing what I should talk about. But no, I love, I love the city council bingo. Uh, I got my squares here. I got my little, my little bingo sheet here.
He's ready. He came ready.
Yeah. Uh, the, uh, most recent one that people love is, uh, I put, people are like, you should put a Ben gets mad square. Cause I get mad a lot of the times. I get very, very mad.
Heated in there.
Mad. Uh, so, uh, we, I did Bing Gets Mad. And then they were like, you should do Bing Gets Mad again. And I was like, yeah, I should. And I cleared that next time. And then it was like, you got mad again. And so now there's a Ben Gets Mad for the third time square, which almost always gets crossed off.
It's almost a guarantee.
Might as well be a free.
Just make the free space.
It might as well be because I get very heated and people will be very confused as I start yelling at the TV as I'm serving the beer.
You know, I, I, I noticed when I'm there in person, I'm taking notes on my laptop and I'm, I'm able to focus in a lot more, but.
At the.
The city council meetings. Yeah. Uh, and I'll, I'll be taking my notes. So I'm really in on it. I'm going back and forth the whole time. But when I'm watching them from my computer at home, if I can't make it, it's, it's a little different feeling. I'm obviously a little more loose. I'm relaxed at home and I, I, I mean, Jonathan, you know, I've texted you when I'm at home, the, I, I get a little bit more free and open with the whole thing. And that's, that's also part of the reason why us live streaming one maybe isn't the best idea.
We talked about it long and hard. We came to this decision that it wouldn't be great because you're gonna get some raw reactions, which is fine, but then you want to be watching city council and we're gonna miss something. And then.
Cause we're gonna start going on a little tangent about something that just happened. Exactly. And the council meeting is gonna keep progressing. So everybody could miss something. And then if it goes for three hours, do you really want to sit here watching? watching them and listening to us for three hours? And it's, it's a whole thing.
So for the time being, it's not gonna happen, but.
We'll never rule it out entirely.
Right. So I know you guys are talking about that, but I've cannot find the breakdown of the taxing authorities. I did pull up my property tax bill from last year.
Fair enough.
And the highest one on there is the, um, Minot School District. That was the highest authority.
Okay.
And then the second one is City of Minot. Third is Ward County and the fourth is Minot City Parks.
Fair enough. That's kind of problem.
That's what we expected.
How I would have assumed.
Yeah, that's how it was based off of last year. I just cannot find the breakdown. There was a breakdown that Dave Lakefield's got all the wonderful things.
He does. Guy is a genius behind the scenes of Minot. Of course, everyone watching us knows, but if, if you haven't heard of David Lakefield, guy is a legend.
Alright, well, that's some good stuff. Anywhere, oh, I had one question that I wanted to ask. Where does city council go from here? So now that we have a full council, what do we kind of expect to see?
Um, I think there is definitely gonna be a lot more passed votes than failed votes pretty consistently. Whether it's good or bad, we're gonna get a lot more of that. Um, I think, and I, I don't, I don't know how Mike Hayes will be on the council. He had a little bit to say during the construction aspect of things as far as, uh, concrete goes and figuring out how that goes, which was the most dull part of the meeting. Um, I, I mean, I, it was, it was long and I get it, but, um.
I didn't, I didn't expect him to speak up like he did. I'll give him props for that first meeting and stepping in.
He did say something, which is good. Um, but I think, yeah, we're gonna need a lot more past votes, I think. And then whatever, I think there are, there was definitely more, before this, there was two factions on the council. That's what I personally believe. I think there was definitely two sides to the council. With this, I think we're gonna have more unity, more unity.
The, the, so there won't be two factions.
I don't think.
I mean, there potentially still could be, but, but you're saying it's gonna be less.
I think the lines are blurred. Yeah. I don't think they, I think before this, they were very solid and now they are not. I think it's gonna be a lot more consensus happening and a lot more agreement.
And consensus would, consensus would mean five, two votes or more.
Five, two. I think you're gonna see five, two, you're gonna see five, two votes and four, three votes.
Because four, four, three votes wouldn't be consensus.
Yeah, well, then five, two votes. I think, I think we're gonna see five, two votes.
Some five, twos, six ones coming back to the surface a little bit more now. Yeah, especially through the budgetary period. I think that's a good.
It's gonna be interesting.
Good outlook for it. Yeah, it will be. It's, it's really kicking off now.
They talked about going and dividing the liquor license.
That was where I was gonna go next here.
Two different areas. Obviously, you guys probably have an opinion, you probably have an opinion on this, but is that, would that be a good step?
I, I, the alcohol ordinance stuff is so difficult to talk about because we have tons of people who have all gotten their alcohol permits in different ways. They've got them inherited, they've got them passed down, they've got them through buying the business. We don't know exactly how everyone has bought their stuff.
Some were annexed in.
Yeah, so, yeah. And you know, one of the, uh, few people that actually has bought their liquor license from the city as of recent is Terry Peterson, the guy who owns the Blue Rider Bar. He recently bought that. So I think definitely he would have the most say, or like, you know, experience of, okay, well, how is this gonna impact me? Because I am in favor of, you know, I think there could definitely be lifting of a ba, of a limit on alcohol licenses. I don't think that's going to install more lawlessness or more crime or anything like that. I honestly don't think we'll, we might see one or two more bars pop up. But there is the, uh, thing of compensation. It is, okay, well, this person spent X amount of money on this, how much should the city, city give them back? Because, you know, you know, they bought it four or five years ago. It's like, we're still paying that off and that's involved in everything.
It's a part of the greater loan that they've taken out on the whole business at that stage. Yeah.
So, um, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to see how it goes, but it, it's such a, it's such an in, on, uh, per case basis of how everything is gonna work. And I just don't know, it's a lot.
Just in general of them splitting the, a lot of the ordinance approvals from the cap itself conversation, you think that was a good move?
I think it's a good move. I think, I think a lot of the problem is the cap. It's, that's, that is the key thing. Ordinances, they can be done on a different aspect. But the, the cap itself is massive and that's what most of the, um, liquor license owners are complaining. I mean, they got, they have representation now.
Yeah, exactly.
Sixteen of them are on to have an attorney and they're ready to do whatever they need to do to seek compensation. So, um, yeah, we'll see how it goes.
Be interesting to see what Mike Hayes' opinion on this whole situation is.
You know, I wanna, I wanna hear all the council's, uh, opinions on this. Um, I'm excited for when they decide to vote. I hope that there are a lot of, uh, liquor license owners that are gonna be there. Um, you know, I think removing the cap is a huge thing and it's a huge deal. But in the day, I think it's gonna be very hard for another bar to open up in this town. I think everyone has their bar that they go to. It's very, you know, it's, everyone's like, alright, let's go to the bar. Let's go to this bar or that bar and.
You might have that night where you do a couple kind of thing on like a Friday or a Saturday, but if you're going after work, you're probably going to one place.
To one place. And so I honestly think if there is, uh, you know, increase or remove all of the cap, the only kind of bar that's going to succeed is gonna be a very unique and very interesting bar that'll bring.
It's gonna be a specialized kind of thing.
Specialized bar that won't attract, I think it'll bring more people out that don't regularly go to bars. But that's, that's my.
If you have just another generic corner bar opening up, odds, it's what are, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
It's a dime a dozen at that point.
Very interesting. Well, uh, something to see how, how the cap goes.
Yeah. You were doing so well for most of the show, so it's okay. You can take a second here, Jonathan. But no, it's gonna be very exciting to see where they go forward with that. Um, it's gonna come up again, I'm sure this winter here.
Maybe some intense discussions. Melissa Wright had a very strong.
Yeah, she did.
Strong, uh, that was one of the ones we were gonna cut and I forgot.
Yeah, she, she came back on the, not the personal appearances, but the public discussion portion of that. And she was very vocal and about the competition aspect of it.
People saying that they, they're afraid of competition.
And she was vehemently against that notion and it's, it's.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. I understand how.
When we had Tony Mueller on the show, owner of, uh, Sports on Top, he, he made some similar notions to that too.
Right.
And it's, it's, it's an interesting conversation on where that's gonna play out in the future here.
Yeah, it is.
And well, before we wrap up, quick update on the Daniel Braho case.
Yes.
That today is the, I guess, arraignment of if the judge is going to accept that plea bargain or not. I think it's at one. I believe it's at one PM. Uh, I wouldn't expect him to turn it down. Everything I'm hearing, it sounds like it's probably going to be accepted. There's been a couple other things I've heard about under, behind the scenes that I can't confirm. So I don't wanna throw them out there yet, but it sounds like it's probably gonna pass. Just, just, yeah, just, just based off of some other.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
Instances, yeah. Something to watch out for. I don't know if we're gonna have an update on that or not, but yeah, that's a huge thing.
Definitely, uh, K M O T, just last night, they did an interview with Jenny Babcock as well. Uh, Joe Skrsheski did a great job with that.
That's all he does.
Exactly. And you'll make sure to check it. I'll, I'll probably, if I, I'm not doing anything this afternoon. So if I don't make it there, I'll post a blurb about what happens for sure. But make sure, uh, you check. I know, right? I, I get done with the decoder and I just don't know what to do with myself. But I'll try to get a blurb up on that. Um, and if not, for sure, make sure you're watching K M O T, Minot Daily News. Charles Crane has done a great job covering this as well. Friend of the show. Um, make sure you're watching out for an update on that, cause that is a big situation that's coming to play out.
So while we're sat here, I, I had an idea and I just wanna hear you guys' opinion on this live.
Okay.
I don't know that we'll do this, okay? But what if we went and created the highlight reel of city council?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Hundred percent. We, I, I think, I've been thinking of that myself, cause I feel like if we get enough people to be like, alright, here are the best snippets of the city council meeting. I mean, I think you need to do that. I, we have to. I think. I have, I have some past clips that, I mean, I think will go viral. I think there have been enough people on personal appearances that. Just personal.
All time favorite?
What?
Where it was if we put catfish in the water, it would fix our water.
That was a trip. That one was a good one.
My favorite was, I had, I'd like double take, cause I had to rewind it, cause I was in the middle of the bar and I like, couldn't believe I heard it. It was, I don't know who it was, but it was like one of the, a very contentious personal appearance meeting. Um, but he said, oh, we're, we're gonna build a homeless shelter for transgender dogs and cats. And I.
Like what?
I like had to rewind it, cause I could not believe it. And I, it was just, this is insane. It was, this is like Parks and Rec. I can't believe this is happening right now.
The city of Minot in twenty twenty-five really could have been, could, could have been developed into a season of Parks and Rec.
We definitely need to get a highlight reel. I mean, honestly, like you said, it would draw awareness and condense it down so people could get the, like tidbits of what's happening. And it'd be a lot of fun.
It could pique the interest to make people want to go watch the entirety of it at that point. And, cause you're gonna see some, yeah, I don't know. That just means we'll have to edit stuff and that's.
That's fun.
Yeah, okay. That's Jonathan's forte right there.
Earlier this year in January, when, uh, I think it was MLK, they didn't have a city council meeting on a Monday. So I went, when I went back and, uh, we watched the, uh, the pride flag won. And I made, I made a bingo sheet specifically for that. That one is crazy. That's a good, it's crazy. That was national news.
That did. I remember when that, I remember when that all happened live. That was, that was a trip back in twenty twenty.
Maybe work on that.
But, uh, Ben, thanks for coming on. We, uh, it's been a blast. You, also, before we get you out of here, why don't we plug the food truck?
Oh, yeah. You're the best food truck. Uh, I do, uh, chick, uh, fried chicken sandwich. I got burgers. Fried chicken sandwich is the best. It's called the Chicken Thigh Walker. It's all Star Wars themed. Uh, but it's, uh, you know, dark meat, uh, skin on the, uh, berenice and pickle juice for about twenty-four hours. And then I, uh, homemade breading and a deep fried beef tallow.
That's awesome.
And I have a bunch of homemade sauces and all that stuff, but it's really good. Um, we might be open tonight, uh, and they're gonna be showing ET in the alley, possibly. It depends on, it depends on the wind.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. It's not looking like it right now. It might be, uh, but we're open usually five to ten on Thursdays and then six PM to midnight, Friday, Saturday. But not this Saturday, because, uh, there's the Double D Hobbit at, uh, Blue Rider. It, it changes. Uh, I have a Facebook page to look at. But, uh, and then, uh, tomorrow night, it's, uh, Myth Tickle. If you haven't seen them before, they're an amazing band. They're awesome. And they're gonna be in the alley. Things, pickleball tournament, be selling food till late. So.
Who doesn't love pickleball?
Yeah, I've been playing pickleball out there all the time.
Ever since my brother got it, I'm into it now. Play a little bit. If you wanna play some pickleball, Jonathan, I'm ready. It's like we gotta play some basketball.
That's right. We do. I wanna play one on one. Alright, thank you guys for watching this episode. Be sure to like and subscribe, tune in this coming Thursday when we have Senator.
Tuesday.
That's fair. It's gonna be Tuesday.
It'll be Tuesday.
It's coming Tuesday when we have Senator, District forty Senator Jose Castaneda join us, talk budget, three percent cap. What legislators do during their offseason, they're still busy, they're still working.
Yeah, they've got committee meetings that are still happening.
Yep. And, um, some thoughts as, guess what? Next year, we're ramping up for another legislative session.
Or elective, election.
That too.
Election and then legislature.
District forty, no election.
Yeah, no, not for them. It'll be three and five.
Three and five. Alright, thanks for watching. Have a great rest of your day.